Good evening. This Town of Adams Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, April 29th, 2020 is now in session. Just as a reminder, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Adams Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. We have members Joe Novak and Jim Bush in the room and members John Duval and Rick Blanchard on the phone. No in-person attendance of members of the public with the exception of one member of the media will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. Reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning into channel 1303. Thank you to Northern Berkshire Community Television for providing that service or by calling 1-646-558-8656 with a meeting ID number of 812-8922-2062 and a password of 025641, all of which can be found on the town's website. And despite our best efforts, if we're not able to provide for real-time access to this meeting, a recording of this meeting will be posted on nbc-tc.org as soon as they are able. So just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by a number of different devices, by television, by Zoom, et cetera. We just wanted to make that known. So with all of that, if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do I have to let any minute? No. So the first order of business on our agenda is the approval of minutes before us. We do have minutes for the April 1st and April 15th meetings. Just before we get to the business of approving them, I want to remind members of the board that everything we vote on is a roll call vote, so I will call you by name to do that. But I did want to just say a special thank you to Deb Dunlap, who is the administrative assistant who provides the minutes for us, and she's been doing this remotely for all of these meetings, and I sincerely appreciate her work on doing this remotely and getting them quickly turned around to all of us. With that, we do have April 1st and April 15th to vote on.
May I make a motion that we wait the reading of minutes and vote them as a rhythm?
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Joe. Any discussion? Rick or John, any discussion?
Nothing.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John? John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And it's a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous on the minutes. That brings us to public comment. I believe that we do have somebody in the room who was not in the physical room, but in our Zoom room, who would like to speak to the board about something that is not on the agenda. I think that's Haley. Do I have to unmute you?
All right. Give it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can hear you.
All right. I guess I'll identify myself. Haley Meswore, Town Clerk.
Thank you.
I just want to let everyone at home that's watching know that the ballots for the town election, the upcoming town election are available now. The absentee ballots slash early voting ballots are available. And if anybody is interested by voting by mail, please call our office, 743-8300, extension 176, and request an absentee ballot application or an early voting ballot application, and we will be more than happy to get a ballot out to you prior to the election.
Thank you, Haley. Any questions for the Town Clerk? We'll start with in the room. Joe or Jim have any questions for Haley?
No.
Okay. Rick or John, any questions for Haley?
No. I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And all of that information will be on the website?
Correct.
Okay. And maybe we can work on getting some stuff on social media as well, just to alert people. Okay, great. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the board about anything that is not on the agenda? If not, we will go ahead and move on to new business. Haley, I'm going to mute you again, though. Okay, I got you. So we'll move on to new business. And the first item is a COVID-19 in-town operations update, and I will turn things over to Jay.
Thank you. So tonight I'll report that the Town of Adams is weathering through our COVID-19 public health crisis, I think steady and stable at this point. Some of our COVID-19 positive numbers are, and again, I'm going to always use my cautionary language with these numbers. Right now, data is very important for us. The data is going to determine when the governor and when localities can ease up some of these social distancing restrictions. So the data is very important to follow, but the data changes very rapidly, and of course, like any other set of numbers, it depends how you define it. But roughly speaking, we've had a total of 32 cases here in Adams, positive COVID-19 patients, and right now we have approximately only seven cases open. And we've gone for, I don't want to tempt faith, but we've gone for a pretty decent amount of time without any new cases. So that's good for us. We have approximately 440 positive cases countywide here in the Berkshires, and the Berkshires' death toll is at 34. Again, the reason why I call attention to the numbers is because at this point, yesterday, the governor, or Monday I should say, the governor extended the nonessential business closure order as well as the no more than 10 persons public gathering or private gathering orders through May 18th. Therefore, town offices will remain in nonessential operations from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. through that date, and then we'll reassess as we go. And I just think it's important for everyone to know that although it may feel as though we're winning the battle, and that may be the case, the battle is not yet over, and therefore, because the battle is not yet over, the war is not yet won. So we have to remain vigilant and continue to abide by those rules as best as possible, wear a mask when out and about, socially distance, et cetera, and we will get through it. So it's just an important reminder for everybody there. I don't think I have anything more really to report under COVID-19. We're pretty status quo as we were from two weeks ago. DPW is back up, running full staff. Again, we have two separate crews working separately. We're using separate trucks, but we are able to put the full crew back. Wastewater treatment will go back to full staff as well, properly socially distancing within the plane. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jay? I'll start in the room. Joe or Jim, any questions?
No.
Or comments?
No.
Okay.
Well, I just want to say, if you own a business in town, please abide by the rules. Do not open. There are people out there looking. We had Jerry Garner, Mike Carkey Dell out there, and if you're caught, you're going to be in trouble.
One business was fined up to this point.
Rick, any questions or comments for Jay?
I just wanted to point out, though, as far as the DPW crews being separate, that is up until where safety is involved. I notice today there was trees being cut down, not a one-person job, so you will see more than one person there.
Well, they will. They'll have to be, and they should be masked when they're within six feet.
Right. I just wanted to point out that safety overrides too.
Yes.
Good point. John, anything for Jay?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
So that brings us to ratification of Special Officer, or Special Police Officer Sean Briggs. I do have the letter from the Town Administrator. Dear Chairman Hoist, this letter is to advise the Board of Selectmen that subject to the Board's ratification is provided in Section 10 of the Town Charter. Sean Briggs has been appointed to the position of Special Police Officer for the Adams Police Department. Mr. Briggs will begin this position on May 4th, 2020, contingent upon successfully passing and completing any hiring requirements of the Town of Adams at the Special Police Officer Grade VII Step 1 rate of $19.77 per hour. And as a reminder, that Sean Briggs did retire from the police department on April 18th after 34 years of service to the department as well as to the Town of Adams, and this is allowing him to help us during the, during this time and helping to staff. But I will turn things over to you, Jay, if you had anything else you wanted to add.
No, this is the same type of position that we have for most retired officers. We have Officer Bob Mallon, who's a Special Police Officer. Officer Alan Mendoza, Special Police Officer. Most departments do this, so this is nothing different. In a situation like this where we may have officers that need to be quarantined and our staffing may become slightly strained, this gives Mr. Briggs the opportunity to come back and fill those shifts, and the chief can use the position as needed, as flexible. So it's not a full-time position. It's as needed as determined by the chief.
So this is a ratification of Special Police Officer for Sean Briggs for that appointment. What is the Board's pleasure?
I make a motion that we ratify Sean Briggs as a Special Police Officer in the Town of Adams.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Rick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I'll start with Joe.
Yes.
Yes, Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it is a yes from Christine, so that is unanimous. Thank you for that. So that brings us to fiscal '21 budget update and a proposed meeting schedule. So as the Board is aware, Jay and Mary have been working hard on putting together a budget that we can go into fiscal '21 with. I'd say that it has seen several revisions of it as things are changing in the world around us, but what has been presented is, I'd say it's a fair budget. It's a level.
Where we could. Discretionary funding is low.
But the revenue projections are really conservative at this point with the information that we have, but we feel good going forward with the budget process. Jay and I have talked to Tim Burdick, the Chair of this Finance Committee, about combining our meetings with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen over the course of four meetings, doing so virtually, which is not ideal. We all know that that is not an ideal situation, but given the timing that we have to put a budget in place, we feel like this is the best route to go. So we are looking to hold two meetings next week and two meetings the following week. We're looking to hold a joint workshop slash meeting on May 6th at 7:00 p.m. using this time slot and utilizing the help of our friends at Northern Berkshire Community Television to help broadcast our first budget meeting with the Finance Committee. We're looking at May 7th, next Thursday, at 5:30 p.m. to meet with a variety of different departments. Wednesday, May 13th at 5:30, both school districts, so Housit Valley Regional School District and McCann, have agreed to present their budgets on May 13th, and then May 14th at 5:30 p.m. to wrap up with the remaining departments. My hope for the Board of Selectmen is that we would be able to go through this process alongside the Finance Committee, but then use our meeting on May 20th to take a deeper dive into anything that the Board would like to take a deeper dive into, with some advance notice about a department or a particular item of the budget that you'd like to talk a little bit further about before approving it, we can have that department head at the May 20th meeting as well. We feel like this might be the best course of action. The logistics of this would be the two chairs of the two boards, or the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, so myself and Tim Burdick, would be in the room with Town Administrator, with the department head, and probably Mary Beverley on some of these stations. And the rest would all be calling in. So every member of the Board of Selectmen would be calling in, and every member of the Finance Committee would be calling in. The Board of Selectmen has been given their board, or their budget books at this point. The Finance Committee would be given their budget books, actually tomorrow. They have been put together. Thank you to Deb for doing that work, and the plan is to deliver those over the course of tomorrow and possibly Friday to their homes. Jay, did you want to say anything?
No, just that this is a very, the COVID-19 public health crisis and requirements to socially distance do not make for conducive local government, particularly under a town government system. So we're doing our best to try to continue to meet the tenants of our charter and to continue to meet the tenants of open meeting and do our best to steer it through. And that's my logistical comment. In terms of the budget itself, as always, we've been very conservative in how we budget it, but you're going to hear me say this on multiple occasions over the course of probably the next 60 days. It is a moving target. We have, when we look at a municipal budget, there are a variety of fixed numbers that you look at. One of them is your local aid or state aid. That is derivative from the legislature, from the general court, and then, of course, from what the governor decides to propose and put forward too. That's all thrown out the window right now. We don't know what the state budget is going to look like. So that flows down to every municipality. However, it is a conservative budget. We'll put it forward, but that doesn't mean it has to remain that way. We also have a provision in place in order to tailor it back and make cuts where needed as we go. We think that is, in speaking with the Department of Revenue, speaking with other municipalities, we feel that's the best approach at this time, is to put the budget forward, do our best to get it passed through town meeting, have a new budget in place that we can work with, and then retract back as we need it, as we monitor our receipts as we go monthly. So that's going to be our approach going forward.
I'll start in the room. Are there any questions, comments, Joe or Jim?
Yeah, I have a question. On your general update that you sent out to us on Friday, April 24th, you mentioned that Mary and yourself participated in a State Department of Revenue Division of Local Services conference call from municipalities, and can you brief me and others about what you had heard from them and their thoughts?
That's essentially it. They can't predict anything. It was not a frustrating call, but it wasn't an uplifting call. And those individuals within the DOR and the DLS are good people, and they would like to provide more information, but the situation is so dynamic and changing, they can't really tell us what the numbers are going to look like. They've done an excellent job of providing us with the logistic tools to extend town meeting. Two weeks ago, we had a conversation about the tax rate, et cetera, excuse me, the tax due dates, et cetera. So they've been able to provide us the tools, but when it comes down to actually trying to predict what the cherry sheet's going to look like, what the state aid's going to look like, it's a big question mark. So they share our frustration as well.
And then because of that, do you think it's a frugal exercise now to put forth a budget?
No, I don't think it's frugal at all. I think we need to have something to work with, and I think it's a lot more efficient to be able to take it month by month, look at our receipts, look at our expenditures, and retract.
Well, that's a 1 to 12 budgeting cycle, so you go one month and then see if, you know, the cherry sheet comes out and to see what we have.
Well, that's only if we continue, if we're not able to put, this budget is a fiscal '21 budget. Our intent is to have a town meeting in June and to put this budget forward under fiscal '21. That's not a 1 to 12 scenario. The 1 to 12 scenario is if we have to continue, if we can't do a town meeting, which might be. Mary and I do have those provisions in place to carry over fiscal year '20 and do the month to month to month and not spend a certain percentage of what was allocated. I think Mary and I talked about it, you know, we could sit back and do that. I think it's in our best effort, and I think we have the capability of putting forward a new budget for '21 and work from that.
And my last question, how do you foresee a town meeting if people can't gather?
There's pending legislation based on our legislative delegation that they're working on to allow for remote participation of town meeting.
Yeah, that's going to be difficult because of, you know, it can work, but it's going to be difficult to probably get a quorum. I think the quorum situation will be a little bit more complicated through the means that you're proposing, but it can work, but a lot of people don't have the capabilities to get on Zoom and that type of thing.
We have to take it one day at a time, and that's also the difficulty with it is we have to prepare essentially two plans in parallel courses. If not, then this. If not this, then that, and that requires us to be very nimble, be very flexible, and that's what we're doing. So we'll be ready for either scenario, but let's keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully some of these restrictions will ease up by the time we get to town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
And to that point, we have been in touch with Town Moderator, Myra Wilk, to start having those conversations about what that, what a town meeting might look like. And I thank Haley Meswore for putting that together.
We've even tossed around the idea, too, of maybe splitting up town meeting into different locations using community television, but no matter how you dice that potato, it looks messy.
Tim, did you have anything?
I agree. Our town meeting members are older members of the neighborhood. Might have problems tying into Zoom. I started Zoom the other day, and I was lost getting on. A guy had a whole assignment saying, turn the volume on. So, you know, I mean...
Well, we're trying to do our best to be literate. We're moving forward rather than just putting the brakes on, stopping, and waiting.
The only thing I'm trying to point out is maybe we should start getting people aware of what's going to happen, how to do it, just so in case this happens, they're a little more literate.
Yeah. And that's part of why the discussion started with Myra and Haley last week, but at the same time, we're trying to see what happens with the governor and if he's even meeting hopefully. That's the piece that we have to nail down first.
We're moving forward, planning for the worst and hoping for the best, I guess to say, but I'd like to thank everybody, the Town Clerk, treasurer, collector, Town Moderator, everyone has been very enthusiastic about trying to make things work in a very difficult environment.
So I'll turn things over to the phones and start with Rick. Do you have any questions or comments about the budget process?
Uh, no, not on the budget.
Okay. John, anything? Any questions, comments?
So all of, I think all the communities in the Commonwealth are in the same situation where no one has a good idea of what the cherry sheets are going to be when we get more into the future. So, and again, we're all in this together, so other communities also have set up for town meeting, other towns, Berkshire County throughout the state, so we're not going to be inventing something here. I'm sure we will be working with other communities to see how other communities are setting up their town meetings, because we're all in the same boat. As of now, we have to have the fiscal budget, the town meeting needs to vote on a budget by the end of this fiscal year, which is the end of June, right? That's correct. The governor hasn't decided to push that out yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you know, there's not many questions you can have at this point. We'll go through the process, but we'll have to just be patient, wait for the governor's direction, and, you know, and see how other communities are going to get through this, and we'll get through it. And in regards to the cherry sheets, some, you know, some communities, you see that are cutting 10%, you know, just things they hear. So I think the process we're taking is just to move forward, discuss the budget we have that the Town Administrator is putting forward, and we'll go from there as best we can do at this point.
I'm hoping, John, that there might be a little bit more information sharing from all of the different communities. Next Friday, there's an MMA call, and part of it is talking about governing through COVID, and it's my understanding the Lieutenant Governor is joining that call as well. So I will be participating and hoping to hear a little bit more about what other communities are doing for their town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on that? We will finalize agendas. We're just confirming participation at this point. It's nailing down the schools, so it's important because we want to make sure that that was done on the same night. But we should get those out to you probably tomorrow at the latest. Okay. All right. So that brings us to setting the town meeting date. So as Jay has mentioned, we are trying to move forward with a town meeting, and we will make plans as we need to, but working with the Town Clerk as well as the Town Moderator, Monday, June 22nd, still looks to be a good date for us to be planning for, so I wanted to go ahead this evening and set that town meeting date. What is the Board's pleasure with that?
I make a motion to set the town meeting date for Monday, June 22nd, 2020.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Joe. Any discussion here in the room? Anyone on the phone? I will just mention that in talking with the Town Clerk, we felt like this date gave us a little bit of time from the town election, which is now going to be on June 1st, to the June 22nd date, to allow for any town meeting members who are newly elected on June 1st to participate and have enough time to be brought up to speed. So that was taken into consideration with this date as well.
It's my question.
I'm happy to answer your question before you even ask it, Jim. So if there's no further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Christine, and that is a yes, and so that's unanimous. So thank you. So now that we have set the town meeting date for Monday, June 22nd, I'd like to go ahead and open the town meeting warrant. This will allow for anybody in the public to bring forward any citizen petitions, anything that they'd like to see brought before us at town meeting, but that does require a motion by the Board of Selectmen to open the town meeting warrant.
I make a motion to open the town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Joe. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? Oh, was there discussion on the phone? I'm sorry.
Yeah, do we have to also put the closing in that motion?
No, because that's the next item.
Okay.
I was asked to put them on separately.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're okay. It's a very good question. Thank you for asking it, and sorry that I almost cut you off. The technology thing, I'm trying to get you... Is there any other discussion from the phone? Anything from John?
I'll start.
Okay. Then hearing none, then we're opening the town meeting warrant. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christine is a yes, so that is unanimous. So as Member Blanchard mentioned, we do have to close the, we have to set a closing date for the town meeting warrant, and I would be looking to set that closing date for Wednesday, May 20th, which would be our next regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. That is my proposed date.
I make a motion to set the closing date for town meeting warrant, May 20th, 2020.
I have a motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Rick. Any discussion here in the room?
Yes, I would just like to bring this to Jay's point. For the people that are viewing in, could you let them know what by closing the town meeting warrant on a particular date means? It was, there was some information given about if people want to put petitions in and that type of thing. Just... in and that type of thing. Just, you know, for the public to understand that a little bit better.
Does Hayley want to come?
Hayley, are you able to comment on that? Since you're still with us? Okay. I've unmuted you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The reason for the closing of the town meeting warrant date is to basically allow for anyone who is interested in submitting a citizen's petition to be on the annual town meeting warrant. So if someone's out there and wants to gather 10 signatures of voters and submit a citizen's petition for the annual town meeting warrant, the time to do it is now and to get it in by May 22nd into the town administrator's office, selectmen's office.
May 20th.
May 20th, sorry.
That's okay. I just wanted to correct the date.
Thank you, Hayley. And the reason I brought it up, to let people know if they do want to put in a citizen's petition, they need to get 10 town signatures.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions in the room?
I have a question. I'm shocked. I think I know the answer. Well, if the town meeting date gets extended out because of COVID, can the town meeting warrant articles be extended out also? Or is this going to be sealed in stone up till the time we have town meeting?
Hayley, do you want to take that one?
Um, as far as the citizen's petitions are concerned, this is the time to submit your citizen's petitions, regardless if we have the town meeting on June 22nd, or, or we postpone it, you know, or the board decides to postpone it into July or whenever, this is the time to submit your citizen's petitions if you're at all interested.
Okay, thank you, Hayley.
You're welcome. I'm not going to mute you yet, Hayley. Anything from the phone? Rick?
No.
John?
I'm good.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to set the closing date for town meeting warrants as Wednesday, May 20th, 2020. I'll take a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Christine is a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you, Hayley, for staying on and helping us with those questions.
Thank you, Hayley.
You're welcome. I'll mute you again. Okay. All right. So that brings us to a discussion regarding some 2020 events. So with everything that has gone on with COVID-19, we, we've seen a number of postponements and cancellations with a lot of our cultural institutions throughout the county. So we're also seeing it with a number of annual events or events that have been scheduled for first half of this year. So I wanted to have a discussion about a couple of them. The first one is Memorial Day. So with the governor extending the order through May 18th, it doesn't necessarily allow a lot of planning for Memorial Day parade and ceremonies as we have done them in the past. If we were to hope that it's not extended again, but if I was a betting woman, I'm betting that it's going to be extended again. So we'll, we'll see. I have spoken with post commander Keith McClair. I spoke with him last week about what the Legion's plans were with regard to the parade and the ceremony. And they were talking about, they were really waiting for a little bit of direction from the board of selectmen. And so we have talked to some of our neighbors in other communities that what they were doing with their plans. I believe that Williamstown has canceled their parade and their ceremony. I believe that Cheshire just did the same thing last night. I believe the city of North Adams has canceled. And with all of those cancellations, we wanted to start talking more as a region about a program that we could put on for residents of Northern Berkshire that could be televised and, and working with our, our friends over community television and not overburdening them with five different requests from five different communities, but maybe something that was thoughtful and brought our region together, but still had a focus on each of the, the communities. And they all seemed receptive to working on that together. And the Legion, at least through post commander McClair, seemed receptive to working on a, a program of that nature. So tonight, I wanted to have a conversation, see where the board, where the board was, how we're all feeling about moving forward with Memorial Day plans or not moving forward with them. Yep.
I have a suggestion. I, I mean, the parade is like a formality with a Memorial Day celebration. Would it be possible to have, you know, speaker up to Maple Street, Maple Cemetery and have the honor guard up there with their guns, have him make the speech, televise it on community television or whatever, and do the 21 events. I mean, we still be honoring our veterans and we wouldn't be having a parade, but at least it gives us a sense of honoring them.
Yeah. And those are definitely the components that we want to include in the program.
The guys with the rifles could be six feet apart. That shouldn't be an issue. The speaker would be at the head of the circle, whatever you want to call it. He'd be far enough away. But we still have a ceremony.
Yep.
I think it's important we have a ceremony to everybody that's involved. You know, we're a role in the community and it runs deep in this community. It really truly does.
Yep. We want to make sure that we're honoring content of the day.
That's my suggestion. I don't know.
Your suggestion.
I'll just leave it up to the veterans group to decide what is best for the Memorial Day celebration.
Rick, as one of our veterans?
Uh, personally, I don't think that any of the honorees for Memorial Day would want anyone putting themselves at risk to honor them. So I would be opposed with something remote like that. Or I would be for something remote, you know, not cancel the event per se and do something through Northern Berkshire Community Television.
Thank you, Rick. I appreciate that sentiment. John, anything to add?
Uh, yeah. I, I think that when the governor, when we get to the 14th, I believe, we still have that 10-person maximum group. After that, if, if he does raise it, it may go to 25. So I think not, not only what Rick has stated, and I agree, that having the parade, which includes the high school band, which they haven't been at school, includes the Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, children on their bicycles, and, and those veterans with underlying conditions. I agree with the, supporting the, the ceremony aspect of having that the best that we can. I think that if they can, the veterans can, you know, they do run this parade. So I support the ceremony with the, as long as the Legion wants to do it.
I think, I think we need to take a motion to actually cancel the parade as a formality. And then maybe a separate motion, or maybe as part of that motion is to work with the Legion on a ceremony that would be within the governor's orders, guidelines and so forth. A little messy, I'm sorry. I'm trying to think through it all. I don't know, is that me? Is this your feedback?
Yeah.
Are you echoed? Yeah, it happens. So yeah, so I guess that's a formal motion of canceling the parade and working on a remote ceremony, probably.
Mr. Chair, I will make the, the motion to cancel parade and work on a remote ceremony.
Thank you, Rick.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion in the room? Any further discussion on the phone? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. Thank you. And I will contact the Legion and let them know and ask to start having conversations. Yeah. So that brings us to the next event. I'm going to unmute Pam, who's been waiting patiently on the phone. And I appreciate that Pam is with us. So I, I know Joe is most familiar with the work that has been going on by the ASCCC group. It has been two and a half years in the process to put together a robust program for our community to be held in August with a couple of other events that have been happening, smaller events up until now. And I know that there has been some conversations about what to do with the celebration in August and thought this would be a time that we should have that conversation. And I've invited Pam to participate in our conversation representing the ASCCC to talk through that. Jay, is there anything that you wanted to add before?
The only thing I'll, I'll add is just to set the context of the, of the conversation is that once again, we're, we're dealing with a very dynamic and fluid situation. We can't predict what, if any, restrictions will be in place for August, when this is scheduled, the weekend of August 20, 21, 22, excuse me, 21, 22, 23. We don't know what, what it'll look like. John just added, you know, I, I think succinctly pointed out that we may go from restrictions of gatherings of 10, 20, to 25 and slowly go up to 50 or 100. We're working within a decimated tourist environment right now within Berkshire County. And this was supposed to be an event that was going to put Adams on the, on the map with all of the, the other events. The other factor to take into consideration is the construction of Town Common in order to accept the statute, which should be able to, to still be done as well. But I think when you take all of those factors into consideration, perhaps it would be best if all the events are canceled, be scheduled for 2021. As Christine mentioned, this group has worked incredibly hard. And I was reminded of it this morning when I went out to inspect something, that the thermometer on that front lawn has almost reached the goal. And I think that's one of the reasons why I would advocate for the cancellation is because I don't think we want to do something that doesn't live up to what the expectations were or the work was of the, of the group to do it. And it's a moving target. It's very hard. Pam and I already had one conversation about the parade. The parade was, was starting to get underway in terms of planning and soliciting bands, et cetera. And they haven't been able to meet. We had a food truck day with a really good live band. And what happens at a food truck event and live bands, people gather. It all comes down to social gathering and social distancing. And that is the playground, if you will, or the battlefield for this virus, social gatherings. And it's very painful to, to deal with. But that's kind of the context of, of, of really, at the end of the day, what this comes down to. We cannot predict what, if any, restrictions will be in place for that weekend in August, followed by the amount of runway time that's needed for a group like ASCCC to be able to get up and running, as well as frankly, some of the contractual obligations that the group in the town has signing, signing these provisions. So that's some of the context that Pam and I already had in the conversation and in which the board might be, might be interested in, in knowing as we go forward.
Pam, I'll, I'll invite you to, to speak. Would like, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening. Thank you. Hi. Listen, I would like to give a brief overview, Christine, if I could, of the amount of events that the select board would be changing. On June 21st, we were scheduled for our first event with the train ride. August 9th was the trial of Susan B. Anthony to be held at the library by Barbara and Jesse, Jesse Waldinger and six other actors from Hudson, New York. On August 17th, Cheryl Fay from Cape Cod was coming out to do, portray Susan B. Anthony, also to be held at the library. As Jay has already stated, August 21st was food and beverage vendors at the visitor's center along with Whiskey Treaty Roadshow. August 22nd was a food truck festival, of which we have 12 commitments, beverage tents, a craft fair in Armory Court, Terry Alaberry for the children on Town Hall Lawn, and Misty Blues, and fireworks at Valley Street Field. And this was to be culminated August 23rd with a parade, dedication ceremony for the Susan B. Anthony statue, an ice cream social at the Common with the Eagles, Eagles Community Band, not Don Henley's Eagles, and the Berkshire Hills Chorus. Those are a lot of things to take care of, and it certainly can be done. And I thought about this long and hard since you invited me. And I will defer to the decision of the board of selectmen and the board of health.
Joe was a member of the group. Did you want to say anything?
Uh, no, I, I agree that at this particular time, it's just not the right thing to do. It's heartbreaking for myself and all the other members. I would like to say though that as far as the statue, I think that we're going to have to have that put in place this year because I don't think we're able to tell the sculptor who's done all this work, we've paid an enormous amount of money for the statue. I don't believe, I'm not sure, Pam, if you've spoken to Brian regarding the situation we find ourselves in, but I don't believe that he would like to keep in his studio that Susan B. Anthony sculptor, sculpture for a period of time. That's just speculation.
Actually.
Yeah.
Actually, I did have contact with Maggie Hanlon the other day. We didn't talk about not delivering her, but she's pretty much finished. They are beginning the engraving of the quotes next week.
Great. Yeah. So I don't know. I think we still have a little time perhaps to make that decision. But I would say that it'd definitely be up to Brian to, you know, if he wanted to store it or if he needs to get it out of his studio. I'm not sure of the size of his studio. I've seen pictures, but pictures don't really tell the story. So is there a possibility, Pam, in the very near future, that you could speak to Brian or his associate David and see what the situation would be with the statue?
I, I could certainly do that tomorrow, Joe. I could reach out to him. Here's the thing though about the contract. The contract, he has to be paid the remaining funds, which we have in the bank, on the date of the completion of the, of the, of the statue. Now, we were planning to do it in August. I think she could be delivered anytime, but certainly a storage fee in Tom's River, New Jersey was not included in the budget.
Right.
Jay, can I?
The town will be ready to accept the statue sometime in August. We'll let Donna know that the statue will be ready and make sure that any provisions that have to be done to accept the statue will be good to go for, for Town Common.
Perfect.
Spoke with Donna, after, after you and I spoke, Pam, that's been the intent all along, is to make sure that whatever preliminary work has to be done to accept the statue can be done and it will be done. So there's no need to be any worry about accepting the statue at all in as much as what do we do to celebrate the installation?
Jim?
Hi, Pam. This is Jim Bush.
Hi, Jim.
I, I was just wondering, would it be possible to accept it, to delivery the statue, get the statue set up and have it veiled? And if later on in the summer, be early fall or whatever, we, and we can have a gathering, have an unveiling party without, I mean, could you do that without hurting the statue? Do you know?
Yes, she can certainly be covered. I, I think it would be a, a challenge for the police force. You know, there's a vandalism concern. But you know, Columbus Day weekend might not be, we have Ramble Fest, that, that might not be a bad idea, Jim. I, I don't know. I, I don't know how, how the select board feels about protecting her from the end, keeping her veil on from the end of August until the fall.
We'll, we'll take it one day at a time.
Yeah.
Well, where there's a will, there's a way. I'm, I'm not concerned.
If we had it, we could put a chain link fence around the statue so they couldn't, they wouldn't have access to it. It's not that difficult to pull one off. It's not that difficult to pull one off. I just hate to see all this work go to waste. And I mean, I feel horrible for the committee and everybody in the town that is going all by the wayside. I just working up just to find a way to make this as successful as possible and not take away the grandeur of it.
Rick, do you have anything you might want to ask or comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay. John?
First, a question to the Madam Chair. So is the board going to be voting on not allowing, not supporting to have these events happen this evening, or we're just going to wait and see what's the agenda item?
It is the board's pleasure. It's the board's decision to see what to do going forward. However, I think that the planning group probably needs more time to, if we are leaning toward a cancellation, would need the time to start notifying people about the cancellation. The concern was the kind of runway that is needed to put together a parade and the other events. And as Pam pointed out, events were starting in June. So it's not just the August that they're talking about, but it's, I guess, to give some guidance and direction to the group as they do ultimately report to the Board of Selectmen. And Pam, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely fair.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to chime in quickly about the parade. That's definitely undoable at this point. We had put out many, many feelers for bands and other types of entertainment to come to our parade. And they were sent out in May, and we've had very few people return anything because during this COVID pandemic, there's minds have been on other things. So as a member, as much as I hate to say it, I don't think the parade is viable at all this year. I just, it just won't work. Is that a fair assessment, Pam?
I agree, Joe. There's no way you can accomplish social distancing in a parade situation. It's just not going to happen.
Madam Chair? A second question. Has the user requests been submitted for all these events?
The facility use request? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yes.
There are town events, they didn't necessarily submit them. They were.
Notice.
They provided notice to the town administrator's office about the usage of different facilities.
And scheduled.
And the schedule.
Okay, so I realize and I agree with Joe and Pam that things like a parade, there's a lot of run-up to that, a lot of organizing. It takes months and months and months to do some, you know, put something together like a parade. But so my thought is that since there's, I think the town administrator should work with this board and of course, the June events probably not going to happen either. But I'd rather, you know, I'd rather not, as a board, cancel anything. I just feel that the town administrator can work with the board. And I'm sure over time, the majority of these events will be canceled. But just to, since it's in August, just, you know, just leave it out there and maybe we can, maybe some of those things the board can do, but maybe the odds are against us. But I just don't feel like at this time that we should, I don't support canceling the events at this time, just work with the town administrator. And town administrator can make those decisions because, you know, we haven't, we don't have any requests submitted for any of these things like that.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Pam.
John, I just want to, I just want to say something. We are under contract for the trial for Cheryl Fay. We have commitments and deposits from the vendors, Whiskey Treaty Roadshow, Terry Alaberry, Misty Blues, the fireworks company. I do need to start getting out of those contracts very soon if, I don't think we can wait until like the end of July. It's not fair to the bands.
Pam, I 100% agree, and that's why I felt that the town administrator, I'm sure, will indicate that it cannot be, it cannot happen.
Okay.
So just working with him, and I'm sure the answer for the majority of these are going to be not going to happen. But since it is August, maybe the ceremony can happen. Maybe it's going to be a 50-person max, and everybody stands six feet away at the Town Common, and we can still have a ceremony in some way. You know, I just don't want to cancel all these events or pick one or two or 10 or, I just at this point, I don't, just not 100% convinced that maybe, you know, because like, you know, we're in worse shape than the state of Maine, but the state of Maine has a plan, like July 1st, everything's pretty much back to normal with social distancing. So, you know, every state is unique, and they're going to have their own rules. But I just think, here we are, we're in April, we may be able, maybe your group, who've done a fantastic job, maybe we could pull something off with the ceremony in August. You know, I'm just crossing our fingers. So I just don't, I just don't want, as a board member, to cancel everything. But the things that need, the things that need to, that aren't going to work, and they're just common sense, not going to happen, that, you know, just even the town administrator just work through it, and those things will be canceled. The board doesn't need to vote on those things, in my opinion.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And I appreciate those comments. And I'll just chime in as somebody who plans events for a living. I know the work that goes into all of this, and I also know the logistical nightmare and the legalities of all of the contracts that Pam is talking about. And, you know, I'll reflect on one of the comments that Jay had made when we started this conversation about this particular series of events. It was to bring visitors into our community, to put the Town of Adams on the map, as I believe Jay had mentioned, and to be a real tourist attraction during the tourist season. And I don't know if we can still do that and accomplish all of that if we have to put something together a month from now and try to ramp up kind of what the intent of the committee was for these events. I find that it's in the same kind of category as like the Aggie Fair, totally different, right? Different audiences, different events, and I understand that. But they are events in August that are trying to bring people into our community, and they're not just events for our community. If these were just Town of Adams community events, I would say, let's hold on and not make this decision. But if this, this is really trying to reach out to different areas of the country, definitely the Northeast, but honoring Susan B. Anthony in the year of 2020 was definitely our year and what we wanted to be doing. And this is painful for me, right? As a sitting elected official who's female and what Susan B. Anthony stands for for me, and to be making this call is very difficult and quite emotional because I know the work that's gone into it. And I can't ignore that. But at the same time, I want to be able to allow the committee to do this next part, the event planning, and try to get out of contracts and so forth. But that doesn't mean that in June or July, the committee can't say, I think we can do something smaller with the statue, and we can have a smaller ceremony, and it could just be for the town or whatever. But I think that the events that have been proposed, at this time, my opinion would be to cancel them. But it is a board decision. And it's not an easy one.
I agree with you, Christine. I just, there's too much planning going into this. And if we wait too long, there's a lot of money involved there, too. They can't afford to take a hit like that. They're better off postponing and trying to bring it up again. It's a terrible thing. I was thinking about the fireworks, maybe they could have them, have people stay in their cars, but you know, that's not going to work.
No.
It's just not going to work. People just don't listen. That's one of the biggest issues we have is the people taking upon themselves to be independent, not listening to what's happening here.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, you know, I've put my heart and soul into this, and every member of the Adams Suffragette Centennial Celebration Committee has also put their heart and soul into it. And I concur that this just isn't the time. Public safety is much more important. And so as much as I feel bad for our group and what we're planning on trying to put together for people, the community and surrounding area, I see no point in trying to go on with the festivities this year. I just don't think it's the right time. I don't think people are in a festive mood at the present time, and I have no qualms with what each and every person here had to say about it.
Joe, is that a motion?
I'm not going to make a motion on this. I don't feel comfortable doing that.
Looking for the clarification. Okay. Do any of the board members have a motion that they'd like to make for us to entertain?
I'll make a motion that we postpone the events till, well, unless we have positive things come forward where we can actually hold them, but postpone till next year if we don't get positive feedback from that governor saying we go four and a half people gathered. That's what we're saying.
I don't think that motion will work, Jim, because I just think that you have to either cancel it. Yeah, I feel strongly of that.
Fortunately, with deep regret, I should say.
Deep regret noted. So Jim's motion is to postpone the ASCCC events until 2021. Is there a second?
Oh, a little second.
I have a second by Rick. Further discussion from the room? Rick or John, any discussion on that?
Yes, John. So the motion is to postpone till next year. Is that the plan of the community that they're going to, since they're not going to be able to hold them this year, that the plan is to hold them as many as they can for another time? Or is it just canceled and then we'll deal with this down the road?
Right now, the motion is to postpone them until next year. But it's a fair question to Pam. Pam, a postponement of this type, is that something that would be okay, that allows you to get out of your current contract for 2020, but maybe work on something for 2021?
I have no, I have no issues with getting out of the contracts right now, Christine. As for 2021, I haven't been able to meet with the committee, so I don't know how they're feeling about that. We will abide by whatever you decide. And if the committee needs to be reconstituted, that can be done also.
I guess it's a preference question about postponement versus cancellation. Are you comfortable with a postponement instead of a cancellation?
I am.
Okay. John, does that answer your question?
It does. Yeah, it does. I just, that's why I asked the question, because I think we should hear from the committee, the board itself, what their thoughts are. They may just, yeah, I don't know what their plans are for next year, and maybe just having a small ceremony with the statue, and that's all they're going to do, but so we're postponing. But in the end, in the end, I'm fine. You know, if the committee is leaving it up to us, and I'm fine with it. It's okay.
Could I just chime in here?
Absolutely, Rick.
I just want to say, I like the postpone idea. The committee did a wonderful job with fundraising, and a lot of people donated funds for the celebration. So I think postponing it a year still allows it to happen, and those funds will go towards their intended purposes as opposed to canceling.
A good point, Rick. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Pam.
I appreciate Selectman Blanchard's remarks because in many instances, funds that were donated were earmarked. And I'm talking about large donors. They were earmarked statue, they were earmarked fireworks, they were earmarked, you know, celebration in general. So that's a very good point. However, to John's point, when I meet with the committee, I have no idea what the schedule would look like for next year. I cannot guarantee the board that it will look exactly like this. Sorry.
That's okay. We're not asking you to guarantee.
I think the general consensus is we want to postpone the event in an optimistic way to say that we're going to celebrate this town's involvement with Susan B. Anthony's life and mission sometime in 2021 with some type of event. Whether it looks exactly like we have on the calendar or whether it's something different, we're going to celebrate it in 2021. And I think that's what we are postponing. We're postponing our celebration of our connection to an important figure in American political life. That's all we're doing. We're not going to cancel it because we're going to do something in 2021. And if I'm still town administrator, we'll do something. The group has worked too hard. We have an excellent amount of money. We have some great ideas, and this town and everyone who's worked hard deserves the opportunity to celebrate. And really, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter when we do it, we'll be together and we'll be celebrating something that's frankly eternal. It doesn't matter if it was 100 years or 200 years. The concepts that she fought for will always be with us and will always be part of this town, and we look forward to celebrating it in 2021. And I'm sure this group, whether it's the same group, the different group, or somewhere, they have the same charge and the same tenant that they've had for the last two and a half years, and that's what we're postponing. We're postponing our celebration. We don't know what it will look like, to Pam's point, but I'm sure it'll be one hell of a time. That's my take.
Okay. Thank you. There's already a motion and a second on the table for the postponement of the events in 2021. If there isn't any other discussion, and I don't think I'm hearing any other discussion, I will take a roll call.
Usually I'd abstain, but I'm going to vote yes because I think it's just the right thing to do at this time.
Thank you, Joe. Jim? Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine. And Pam, I want to thank you very much for your participation this evening. But more importantly, I want to thank you for your leadership with the committee and over the last two and a half years. And thank you in advance for your leadership going forward to, I guess, get out of the August 2020 plans and not the other ones. So I just wanted to thank you, Pam.
You're entirely welcome, and thank you.
It's a little messy. I told you. I have a lot of emotions about this particular discussion today, so. All right. And Pam, you can stay with us if you'd like, but I might mute you. So raise your hand. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering, she's going to entertain the idea of unveiling the statue at a later date. I mean, even though we're not going to have the celebrations that are planned and everything else, I still think that would be a huge thing for the community.
I will be talking with Jay about that, Jim, I'm sure.
Okay. We already chatted about it. What we're afraid of is we just don't know what the social gathering requirements are. But if we know that all the construction preparations will be in place with the infrastructure to accept the statue, and if the social gathering restrictions are lifted, then they're restrictions are lifted, then there's no reason why we can't do something locally. Won't be on the attraction level, regional attraction level that, that Madam Chairman mentioned before, but we could definitely do something locally. It's just, we don't know what we can do yet. That's, that's the frustrating part, is we just don't know what we can do. But I'm sure between the assets that we have in town, between caterers and local, you know, bands, I'm sure we can probably put something together in a relatively short period of time with a bunch of people putting their heads together in order to celebrate, if we can. But that's, that's the most frustrating aspect of it, is if we can, because you can't plan.
Three bad words.
I know.
And if you never plan, you plan to fail. And for a planner like myself, that really is a difficult work environment. Yes, it is. It's very frustrating.
I don't know anything about planning. All right.
So I, I hope to do something, yeah, Jim. Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. So having the other two items on the agenda, I did ask Deb to pull any of the events that the board has already approved for the year 2020 with regard to the facility requests. And right now, what I have in front of me are five that we have already approved. One is for the use of the Adams Visitor Center for the Noah Brown Scholarship Run, which was scheduled to be this Saturday. There's already a pending request. Staff have been working with the organizers of that event to bump that to October 2nd. We had approved three different weddings to be held at the Greylock Glen, one in July, one in August, and two in August, sorry. And use of the Adams Visitor Center for the Alzheimer's Association Walk on October 3rd. There are a number of facility requests that are still pending, as we have not put them on the agenda because of the COVID-19 pandemic. But there are requests for use of fields by different leagues. There's also the request for the Adams Visitor Center to be used by Pro Adams for Ramble Fest. Sorry, I wrote Thunderfest, but that's the wrong season. I'm not getting this going for just yet. And so what I wanted to do is bring this to the board's attention, but I'm wondering if it would be in our best interest to maybe make a motion or, or somehow put this in the hands of staff to work with all of the organizers for these various events and to be making these decisions on our behalf, to see if they are canceled, postponed, or whatever it might be. But I think at this time, it might be best for staff to be working with the event organizers for the various things that we've already approved and work with them to see if they're postponing or if there are modifications to what their requests were.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, particularly the weddings. I mean, and the quicker that you can get to those individuals about the situation, they might have already found different outlets, but particularly the weddings at this point, I would make sure if it's allowable by the board to just let, you know, the people like Jay or anyone else within the office that has jurisdiction over this to just speak to the people and see what their plans are.
Yes, because I think it has to be a case-by-case basis, based on the nature of the use, the intended use, and when. And I hate to tell somebody who wants to get married in the Glen, uh, August 16th, they, they can't without knowing what the restrictions are. If they have a hundred-person wedding and the social restriction is 100, maybe they're willing to do fifty. It's just difficult to make a, you heard what, you know, the debate that we went through with our own events. So I think case by case, we can have Deb reach out and take these one at a time. I think the fall ones are the safest at this point, but the summer, I think, has a big question mark on it.
Yep. And again, a lot of these that are on this list, I mean weddings in particular, take an awful lot of planning and a lot of time. So I would like to put forward that we have the Town Administrator's Office work with the various event organizers for the events that have already been approved by the Board of Selectmen to work on either postponement, cancellation, or modification.
So Madam Chair, I don't want to belabor, belabor this issue, but you know, that was a recommendation I made for the, the events for Susan B. Anthony. I know there were some smaller events that could have, you know, possibly, you know, depending on the governor's restrictions, maybe could have them in August. But I recommended that Town Administrator work with them and, and, you know, and case by case. If it all comes as a package that we're not going to have anything, then that's fine. We're going to have it next year. Now here we are, we have events like weddings, could be 100 people. I forget what we approved, 80 people for June or July. We have no idea what the, what the governor's restrictions are going to be and how long they're going to last. So shouldn't the, shouldn't the Board of Selectmen be providing guidance to the, the town to, you know, really no gatherings as we just, you know, we just postponed the gatherings all in August. There's a lot of ramp of time as weddings take, as even in October, as the Columbus Day weekend events take. They take time. So I'm just a little confused, you know. Now, this is a case-by-case basis. Maybe we can have something in July, but you know, so I'm not, where is our, the board's guidance on, you know, not, we don't know how many people can gather. Now it's 10. You know, can these weddings happen? I won't say, yeah, you can have a wedding in July, but, and then they start, okay, now we transfer everything to July, another date. Then we say, no, you can't, because you can't have it in July, because you can only have 20 people to gather. So, you know, I think some guidance should be provided to, you know, as a town, that any type of event. I'm just a little confused from the last discussion that, that's what I wanted to do, is have the Town Administrator. And I don't want to get caught in discussion and belabor, and this going on, and, and I just want to cut it off now. But I'm just thinking for weddings, things like that, you know, it's probably not going to happen until, like, I think somebody mentioned the fall. It's probably probably the best thing we should do, is probably say, really think about the fall for any of these type of weddings, large gatherings. It's probably the next opportunity, the first opportunity they're going to have. I don't want to give them, or, no, I'd rather have the town give them a date that's before then, because we have no idea. So that's just my opinion. I'm going to, that's all I have to say.
Sure. I, John, I will address it from my point of view, the difference between the events that we just talked about with the committees, that those are town events and those were events that we were trying to bring tourists into our community. And that takes a lot of planning, marketing, promotion to do so, aside from the logistics of having those events. The events that are before us are invitation-only, and we don't know at this point if the wedding that is scheduled on July 25th, if they have already made a decision to either postpone their wedding or modify their wedding in some way, shape, or form to just have the couple there and maybe two witnesses and a person that is marrying them. So they may have already made those modifications, but that's what I would like the staff to be working with the individuals for that. I would believe that if there was something that came up in those discussions that seemed that it needed to be brought to the full board's attention, that the Town Administrator would do so. But in this case, it might be just having those conversations with these individuals for invitation-only events about what the restrictions are here in the Town of Adams currently and what we don't know, right?
And what their intentions are.
And what their intentions are. So for me, that was the difference.
Their intentions are to still have a 500-person gathering in July, then we might want to caution them and say, that's probably not going to happen.
Right. And the Ramble Fest event that usually happens in October, and they have submitted their paperwork early, is one that I have on hold for the same reasons that we just went through the discussion about the Susan B. Anthony event.
Okay, understood. And just one more thing, one more statement, is that the Susan B. Anthony events, I know that it's been mentioned several times about it's really for the tourism to bring people in, but I think the people of Adams will have a lot of pride in what's been accomplished by that committee. And in having a ceremony, if it did, now it's not going to happen, but if it did, I'm sure there's been a lot of local community pride in that ceremony. So it's not just the tourists in the end. I know that's, that's a goal, to bring in money and things like that. But I think the community, you know, it's a great, it's a great event, ceremony for the community because of the community people that work so hard to make these things happen. So that's just a statement.
First statement. So that leaves us with, I put forward, I guess, the option to have the Town Administrator work with the organizers of these individual events that have already been approved by the Board of Selectmen to work with the organizers to postpone, cancel, or modify their plans. And I guess, I don't know if I can make a motion. Can I?
You see the chair, doesn't it?
I know, I can't.
I'll make a motion, what was stated by our chairman as the motion.
Thank you, Joe. I was like, I can't make motions. I'm out of practice.
One second.
Thank you. Any discussion in the room? Other than your chair has lost her mind. Any discussion from the fall? Hearing none. Roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine. So that is unanimous. Well, good. I get to stop talking and I get to turn things over to Jay to walk us through the Community Choice Power Supply Program Aggregation Plan.
Another riveting topic for this evening. Yes. So briefly, to give everyone a background, in 2015, I believe, was the year the Town of Adams joined the municipal aggregation program, which takes every municipal electric user within the jurisdiction, combines it together, and with that buying power, attempts to leverage that power in order to get lower utility rates. There's a lot more to the plan than, than just that. But essentially, for tonight's purposes, we are required by law to give notice to the public that we are modifying the Community Choice Power Supply Program Plan as published. There's only one small change, and that is, rather than having one rate, there will now be two rates that a participant or enrollee in the plan can participate in. Because it is a DPU, Department of Public Utilities, approved document under state law, every municipality that participates, which is mostly Berkshire County, at least most of northern Berkshire, has to publish this for three weeks, give public notice. It's unavailable on our webpage. I believe Madam Clerk has already posted it on the webpage. Read the document. We'll accept public comment. Once the public comment period closes, then the Board of Selectmen will be able to approve the amended agreement. That does not include the actual rate itself. The actual rates themselves have already been approved by the municipalities, including Adams. And that is the only other change that we're going to talk about tonight. So two things. Number one, the agreement itself has changed only with the addition of the second rate. That language is in, is in the plan as well. We're required to give three weeks of notice. That's what we're doing. We're giving public notice that it now is opened up for three weeks. Secondly, I can tell you that the rate that was agreed upon by the municipality goes into effect November the 1st, 2020, for a period of 36 months through October 2023. And that rate will be 0.09784. Currently, the plan is 0.10408 per kilowatt. So it is less than what enrollees are paying now. And just as a comparison sake, if you're in the National Grid Basic Program and not an enrollee, give or take, you're paying about 0.13, but that number changes on a routine basis. If I could understand the electric industry in this, I would probably not be a town administrator, because this is, it's a very interesting deal. The opt-in plan gives an individual the option to choose a rate that comes from more green energy. Now, we're just talking about electrons, but that's how this plan works. So if you're a consumer and you're concerned about promoting green energy, you have the option for another rate, and that is 0.09698. So they're very close. They're not off by much. The rates are set. That was all done in early March. We were, every municipality had a vote all at the same time for it. And based on what the offerings were from our consultant, Colonial Power, which is the conglomerate consultant in every community, these were the rates that we got. So it's really a bureaucratic process. I tried to explain it as best I can, but the board doesn't have to do anything tonight at all. We're just giving notice to the public that the plan was modified for reasons therefore. It's published for three weeks. Take your time, look at it. The board can look at it as well, ask any questions offline, and then we'll put it on the agenda as soon as we meet again after the three weeks is closed for approval of the plan, of the plan which authorizes the second opt-in rate. But the rates themselves settle.
That is the rate that we have. Yeah, that was.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Now, if we approve this plan, is that automatically going to be, take over a plan that we presently have, or do we have to re-sign up for a plan, do you know?
Are you talking about an individual enrollee?
Yes. I mean, if.
None of that changes?
None of that changes. It just flops over to a new plan, basically.
Okay. The addition of the plan is like six sentences. Offering the second rate, that's all. How the mechanism, how the plan works, how National Grid contacts you and tells you this is what your rate is, you have to opt out. All the mechanics have not changed at all. None of that changes.
So I think you answered my question, Jay. So if someone signs this Community Choice Power Supply Program Aggregation Plan at 11:20, their rate is locked in at what you mentioned until 10/20, until October 30 of 2023, it's locked in?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, locked in. That was one of the, there was different rates, but that was the longest term length.
Okay.
With the, the best rate, and it was almost a no-brainer for almost every community. And I would like to thank, thank, Deb's got a lot of things tonight, but it's worth it. I'd like to thank Deb for her help with this, because this happened at the worst possible time for every municipality here, where we're being asked to study this, debate it, look at it, try to do its best for budgetary control, and it's best for our representative, for our citizens. And at the same time, we were right in the middle of COVID-19 was knocking on our doorstep. So Deb, having dealt with this in the previous contract renewal, was very helpful. So thank you, Deb, for your help with this.
Rick or John, any questions?
Madam Chair, I do have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
For Jay, just for clarification, you mentioned at the beginning that there's going to be two rates this time around instead of one, correct?
Correct.
And so the, so what's the diff, so so everybody understands that, so I can understand that. So now we're going to two rates. You mentioned about green, you know, what, what, so how do you, so how does one get one rate or the other, or for a different time differential? What were the two rates?
I, I don't know the exact process of it, but I assume that when you enroll, you're going to have the option to do that. That'll, that National Grid will be responsible for telling you it's one of these rates. So it's automatic unless you opt out. And you're going to have to, you're going to have to go for the other optional rate. But we'll get that information for the, the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything, Rick?
Nothing for me.
Okay. And we don't have to take any action on that tonight. That'll bring us down to New Business I. And it's congratulatory signs for graduating seniors. Over the last week, I had seen Berkshire Emporium in North Adams, it put together some signage for all of the different schools in the county, just celebrating seniors. And I know it's like as individuals, people have probably purchased some signage, but what I wanted to do, I know Tim did, but what I wanted to put before the board this evening was the opportunity for the town to purchase some signs. was the opportunity for the town to, um, purchase some signs and recognize our graduating seniors from our local schools. So I think at each of your places, I had, um, Deb print out just a couple of the signs that have been pre-made by Berkshire Emporium. I have also, uh, contacted Keith Bona, who runs that shop, um, and he has indicated that he could add the town seal to these signs, um, and we would be able to put them on town property. And again, just trying to congratulate our seniors on a, a job well done, number of years that they have been in school. And it's an odd time to be graduating, so uh, because it would be using some town resources and town property, I wanted to put it before the board to endorse, uh, this idea and, uh, maybe have the town administrator move forward with it, if the board was in agreement. So I open it up for discussion.
Uh, how, how many signs are you looking at purchasing? I mean?
Probably, like, my idea was just to put one, um, for each of the schools on the town law. And so it's really one for Huzick, one for McCann, and one for Bart. So post three signs.
I make a motion that we purchase the three signs.
Did you wanna do the college? You had said earlier you wanted.
I had thought about doing the colleges, but I, I don't know. I, I'm, I definitely really would like to do something with the high schools. And if the board also wanted to do the colleges, we could do something for MCLA, Williams, and BCC, but those are institutions there, but. I have Jim with a motion to put forward the, um, high school signs.
It's only $30, three signs. I mean, that, when I saw it last Saturday, I called Keith up and.
Now, Keith is also telling me you can do bigger signs, you could do other things. It might not be the $10, it might be like 15, but, yeah.
I don't know what I'm doing. Yeah, she's gonna print on my lawn, I think, tomorrow.
And it's a one to two week turnaround time is what he told me.
Yeah.
So they would be in place before the first graduation that would have been scheduled, which I think was Bart, and it was May 30th, with McCann that was scheduled to, uh, graduate on June 3rd, and Huzick Valley on June 5th. So Jim, I appreciate the enthusiasm in the, uh, motion. Is her second?
I'll second.
I will second.
Oh, I have a second from Joe, but thank you, Rick. Is there, um, further discussion on the signs?
Yeah, I would just like to say, uh, to the seniors, having, uh, been in the school system as a substitute, I've got to know a lot of the kids, have they gone up in ranks and in, up to the class, and this is a tough time for them. It's a time when, you know, they're being, I guess the best word is cheated out of things that make your senior, uh, year so special. But I, my message to them is, you've just begun your path. You're just a fraction away in your life, so you've got a lot of goals that you will be able to reach, and, um, it's not easy, I'm sure it isn't, but we expect a lot out of you as you, uh, go on to, uh, what you're gonna choose to do, be it college, uh, the workforce, military. So the best I can do is, uh, wish you all well, and I, I can't do anything about the COVID-19, but keep your spirits high. You certainly deserve it.
Thank you, Joe, for the sentiment. Any discussion from the phones?
One question, uh, what was the cost?
Um, they're $10 each. They might end up being like 15 each if we go with a larger size than the, um, than the piece that they're, so we're looking at $30 to $45 in the, to some law. Anything else?
That's all I heard.
Okay, thank you. Uh, hearing none. Roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And it's a yes from Christine, so thank you very much. And I will, uh, pass that information on to the town administrator's office. But Counselor Bona has been very helpful in getting us that information, so I'm happy to turn that over to you. And I'm also happy to turn over the department reports section of the agenda, um, to you and see if there's anything else you wanted to add.
I'm gonna try to make this, uh, the good, the good, good news section because tonight's been quite a heavy meeting. First thing, report from, uh, Ms. Kelly Rice, our treasurer collector. In terms of, since two weeks ago, the board made its decision to waive any late fees, penalties, et cetera, uh, for any tax bills that would not be met by May 1st. As of now, Kelly reports that she's only received about 10 inquiries about delaying tax payments. Uh, three of those were businesses and the balance were all residential. Uh, however, they've been able to talk one-on-one with those individual taxpayers, and everyone else is paying. So on behalf of town government, thank you. Thank you for, uh, keeping true to the due date because it does help us. And if you can't because of your financial situation, we completely understand that as well, and please call Kelly to work. So as of right now, uh, we're looking good there. It's the bag tags for, uh, transfer station. Our application process online's been going in well and going steady as well. Kelly reports that, and this is true for every office here within the town, the most difficult aspect for folks is just how do you conduct business being closed to the public? And little by little, uh, people are, are making it work. I'll tell you, we can't wait to reopen, for sure. But I appreciate everyone's patience here in, in town to work with us. Uh, the other good news is I'd like to report, uh, for folks at home that may remember several weeks ago, uh, the board approved a, um, $50,000 contract with Ty and Bond Engineering to review the capital improvement plan for our water treatment plant, as well as a rate study plan. And I'm pleased to report that, uh, thanks to the efforts of Kevin Toll and our community development office and Donna Stevens, we've received a $50,000 community compact grant that will fund that, um, report and review and allow us to move forward with, uh, a plan to improve our wastewater treatment plant as well. So that's $50,000 now that we can take right out of our capital, uh, outlay and save some money for us moving ahead. So I'd like to thank them. And just quickly, I'd like to read the letter because, again, we need good news. It says, Dear Town Administrator Green, congratulations on entering into a second community compact with the Baker-Palito administration. As you well know, community compacts create clear mutual standards, expectations, and accountability for both the state and municipalities as together we seek to create better government for our citizens. We're excited to continue to partner with the Town of Adams as you implement your chosen best practices, that is to manage water and wastewater assets for timely maintenance and rehabilitation, as well as wastewater enterprise fund feasibility, feasibility study. The governor and I appreciate Adams participating in the community compact program again. We look forward to continuing our partnership through the community compact cabinet, sincerely, Karen E. Palito, Lieutenant Governor. So I just wanted to point that, uh, government in the normal process is actually still working in the middle of the public health crisis in town, I agree. So thanks to community development, uh, and our staff there. And lastly, uh, there's not a lot of public interaction with the town accountant's office. That's mostly an internal office that I spend a lot of time in, uh, myself, as well as other department heads, but there's been two figures in that, that office that has worked really hard over the years, and one of them is retiring, and that would be Ms. Barbara Lewis. Uh, Barbara has about 35 years of service with the Town of Adams. She's a financial accountant three, uh, and is responsible for payroll, for accounts payable. And she keeps me on my toes in terms of making sure that I sign, uh, payroll and all of our warrants on time, and if I don't, she's right there, along with Deb at the morning. Can you please sign? Make sure you sign so we can get the quote paid. So on behalf, I think, of all of us in the Town of Adams, I'd like to thank Barbara for her service. Uh, she's been a pleasure to work with. She's one of the most dedicated, uh, people I've, I've ever seen. Uh, and we're gonna miss her, uh, but it's a, a retirement, uh, well deserved. So on behalf of myself and the staff, uh, congratulations, Barb.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Jay?
Yeah, just one quick question, Jay, um, about the, uh, you said three, 10 people so far have asked for extensions, but what percentage, do you have an idea? You said that they were coming in, but how, what's the percentage number of, uh, returns we've got from the community?
Um, she didn't give an exact number.
Okay.
She only says that there's only been 10 inquiries, not made a list yet, but she said, uh, the money is coming in, people are paying at a good rate. She doesn't see much of a delay. Um, anyone who has the, uh, their mortgages.
Okay.
What's the word I'm trying to think of?
Escrow?
Thank you.
Escrow.
Uh, thank you. Escrow, uh, normally the banks don't pay until the day of or, or just before. So we'll have a better report, you know, right after, but I take that as being positive.
That sounds like good news.
It is. That's all I have.
I just want to wish Barb and Louis a happy retirement. I've known Barb for years and years. We're on a lake together all summer long, on a lake together in the wintertime. Keep it up, Barb, up to the end of the water.
Rick or John, do you have any questions for Jay?
I have nothing.
No questions.
All right. Thank you. And I believe our town council is still on the phone with us, so I will unmute the town council and see if there's a report this evening.
Well, the past, uh, six days, uh, it's not been very active on the legal side of things for Adams, but I, I did review, I researched and commented on the proposed language changes to the new chapter 40R zoning by law. And, uh, that covers, and that took a while, but it covers a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for staying on the phone. Any questions for town council before I mute them again? Uh, Rick or John, any questions for town council?
Nothing. I'm good.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That brings us to, um, Subcommittee Liaison Report. Uh, Joe?
I have nothing.
Jim?
Uh, banners for fallen heroes is moving forward. We're gonna have a meeting next week or a week after, finalizing everything and centering off the fronters. We're doing great.
Good. Good work. And you were able to, you know, go through your first Zoom call, so I'm, I'm.
My first Zoom call.
Very proud of you.
I had video.
I'm very proud of you, Deb.
Trial and, it's one of those things, it's trial and error. My problem is, is I still can't get used to seeing myself or hearing.
That was my problem, looking at my telephone. I've seen my phone, I've smashed my head. What are you doing there? It was strange to say to me.
It's definitely strange. These are strange times. Uh, Rick?
Nothing.
John?
Yes, we, um, had a Metropolitan Planning Committee meeting yesterday. For the Adams, uh, pavement rehabilitation and related work on Route 8. Um, the current, uh, cost, which we approved an amendment, is 8,849,818. And the project, the, the bridge project that goes along with it, um, it's, it's a systematic bridge maintenance, um, Route 8, Grove Street, over the Ash Wilton Brook Trail and Huzick River. Um, that is, uh, a cost of 522,200. They had a bid opening on April 7th, and they have a low bidder, um, that they're looking at. Um, so, and I asked the question, is there any delays, um, in the shovel-ready projects because of the, um, the COVID virus, and, and they, District 1 indicated no, that they are moving forward with all the shovel-ready projects. So the Route 8 project, um, will be moving forward. It's, uh, past the environmental, uh, clearance. Uh, I think it's, it's pretty much past all, uh, all of the clearances they're gonna need. Um, so I think, uh, I don't know if it's just down to the, the town meeting and the, uh, and the abutting land we have to deal with, but we're, it's gonna happen and it's moving forward.
Great, thank you very much.
That's all I have. Yep.
No sense in good of yours. Joe?
Yeah, I have a few things. I'll be quick. Um, I walk frequently in the town and there's a lot of dog droppings on the sidewalks, and, uh, it's quite noticeable, and, once again, we've gone through this so many times in this community. Clean up after your dogs. It's the thing you should do. Um, I did notice that the tattoo parlor, um, down here has vacated. Uh, they're no longer in the, uh, Bishop and West Block. It kinda came quick. I was sad to see that. They've been a pretty well-established business. I don't know the situation. I know we, as a group, and Jay worked hard to, uh, work with them to try to make them stay here, but I don't know the situation, but when I walked by and saw it empty, I wasn't very, uh, it certainly isn't positive. Also, um, I got a call from a gentleman who lives on Summer Street, uh, and he's concerned about the, uh, area where Burnett's Shoe Store was, the, the, uh, building that was demolished. Um, it is town land and it's an awful mess. There's a lot of litter in, uh, along, uh, Winter Street and on our parcel that, and walking by, it certainly, uh, needs to be attended to, to clean up. There should be somehow that perhaps, I don't know who the person would be to tell the people that are living in, on Winter Street to, you know, be a little bit more courteous and, uh, clean up a little bit. I don't know how that works, but it, it is, it's unsightly. And, uh, once again, Barb, uh, Lewis, uh, I wish you the best. I've too known Barb for quite a while. She puts her head down and she does her work and gets it done. And, um, I have a question for, um, Jay, what are the two posts, uh, out at the, uh, driveway? What, what's going there?
A sign that says accessible entrance and visitor parking for town hall.
Okay, yep. And another thing, uh, too, is, um, I found out that through tax, uh, we took the old Sabastino garage down there. And if there's anything that's taken like that, I really wish that I could be notified because I know we've had, you know, go-arounds about, uh, the mobile station because of brownfields. I'm certainly sure that, that gate, that station down there may have some brownfields, uh, considerations.
That's a function of the treasurer's office, just the tax title process, but we can ask the treasurer collector to get notice when the property's taken.
Right, 'cause I think we should know, at least I think I should know as a selectman, because somebody asked me, I saw the town trucks down there cutting Troy Street Service and the town employees putting things on their truck, and I didn't have an answer for it. And lastly, um, this is important. I think as a community, we've gotta work like hell to get some local monies from this, uh, stimulus package. Um, I think we should be writing a letter right now, giving it to Adam Hines, John Barrett, calling, uh, Congressman Nea, who's the head of Ways and Means, that, you know, we're entitled to it. And there's gonna be another stimulus program, and right now, there's, and I don't like to bring national politics up, but it, it, it filters down. It's like a funnel, and we come out the very end. And as it stands now, there's a fight about with the Senate Republicans wanting to, uh, Mitch McConnell saying, well, if states can go bankrupt, and that's unconstitutional because states cannot go bankrupt. And, um, Senator from Florida, Republican, we against them. Uh, the blue states against the red states, and we should be bigger as a, uh, society than going against each other, and the Democrats too. I mean, you know, it's time that this country comes together, and I'm glad to see that our speaker on the Democratic side, Nancy Pelosi, is getting together, uh, committee, and then, uh, McCarthy, the minority, uh, speaker for the, uh, House of Representatives is gonna put a, a committee together. The Democrats have already put it together. It's gonna be led by Jim Clyburn. Clyburn, he's a, a long-time, uh, representative from South Carolina. And to see where this money is gone, and because as I've seen, and I think others who pay attention to the press, a lot of people that are getting this care money are large organizations. When this first came about, there was supposed to be a committee to see where the funding was, but the person that was put in charge was taken out of his position and. was, but the person that was put in charge was taken out of his position, and someone, I'm not going to mention a name, was in charge of seeing where the money went. And I'm wondering how we can find out, how many people in the Town of Adams have put in CARE Act requests for small businesses, and how many has even got a response, one way or another? Because I've been talking to people and telling them about it, and I know a few have put in, and they said they don't even hear anything back. So, I think we've got to fight like hell as a community, get a letter together, get it out and say, hey, we're looking for some help, because the next funding is going to be for states and local government, and show that COVID-19 has affected the Town of Adams to a point where we believe that we should get some type of reimbursement. And so, I'm asking you, as an individual, the Board can do, say what they want, but to get a letter out now, saying that, you know, we want some help, and that's where I'm going to end. Because it's, it's, it's a big nation thing, but it's like the little funnel, everything gets thrown in, and then it comes down, and where it lands is, who knows?
Thank you, Joe. Jim, anything for announcements can go to the order?
Okay.
Rick, anything?
Nothing.
John?
Everyone, stay healthy and safe.
Appreciate that. Same to you. There's nothing else to come before the Board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Oh, after the Food Bank, it was just about three hundred. Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, for a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, I can't imagine there's any discussion on that. So, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
That is a yes from Christine, so we are adjourned at eight fifty-two.
And I'll come in tomorrow to sign if there's anything to be signed, and everyone sit here. Yep?
Yep. Did you want to sign tonight, Rick? There you are.
I'll be in a list.